It is four oh one and I will call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the roll call.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Dave Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Carol Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Brandon Cable. Is not present at the moment. Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will start today's meeting by observing the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, the TRC, was officially launched in two thousand and eight as part of the Indian Residential Schools Settlement Agreement. Intended to be a process that would guide Canadians through the difficult discovery of the facts behind the residential school system. The TRC was also meant to lay the foundation for lasting reconciliation across Canada. Reconciliation starts with all of us acknowledging, listening, learning, and following through on the truth and reconciliation calls to action. In two thousand and twenty-two, this council agreed to support the journey to reconciliation through some specific actions. A land acknowledgement policy was unanimously supported, and we respectfully share the land acknowledgement statement prior to our council meetings and corporate events. As well, the Every Child Matters flag is flown outside the civic center. A moment of silence is observed during a council meeting, and we encourage staff and elected officials to wear orange in recognition of the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, also known as Orange Shirt Day on September thirtieth. The land acknowledgement. As we work toward reconciliation with Indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipwas of Sogin and the Chipwas of Nauwah, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor the lost children and survivors of residential schools, their families, and communities. May we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Thank you, council. So, welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, September third, two thousand and twenty-four. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Seeing none, as always, if one should arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. We do not have any agenda additions or deletions, but we have our health and safety message, which is item six point one, and I will share that with everyone this afternoon. So, tips to reduce school backpack-related injuries. With the new school year upon us, it's time to consider one of the most essential items for back to school, the backpack. The right backpack can make a significant difference in good back health. The following tips can help minimize the load on the body and the chance of injury. Backpacks should be made of lightweight materials such as nylon or canvas. It should have two padded, wide, adjustable shoulder straps. Look for a backpack with a padded back, individualized compartments, hip strap, a waist belt, or frame to help redistribute the weight. The backpack should not be too large for the child. Select a backpack the length of the torso with the bottom two inches below the waist. When filled, the backpack should not weigh more than ten percent of the child's body weight. Heavier items should be packed low and in the center. Lift the backpack by using the leg muscles and keeping it close to the body, not by bending over with arms extended. Do not lean forward when walking. If this is necessary, there is too much weight in the backpack. And clean out the backpack once a week. I'm sure people find lots of interesting things in those backpacks, so a good clean out is good. Okay, moving on. Item seven is the delegations, and we have one delegation this afternoon. This is item seven point one, and we have Kelly Linton with Linton Consulting presenting information about an organizational review for the town of Hanover. So, welcome, Kelly.
I've been out of practice for so long, I forget how I use microphones. Welcome. Thanks. Thanks for having me, Mayor Patterson and members of council. It's my pleasure to be here today to really share with you where we're at with the organizational review project and get your thoughts, get your input, because we don't want to go too far down the path of looking at the organization without the input from the elected representatives. You have a unique perspective, and you have a view to the electorate and your community because of the nature of running an election in two thousand and twenty-two, so that we want to make sure it's part of this project. So, in addition to talking to staff and making sure all staff have the opportunity to talk to myself, throughout this process, we wanted to make sure that we started this phase off with some good input from you. So, I will be asking some questions, but the first part of it is to give a little bit of a little bit of a sense of where the project is. So, here's the agenda, project status update. Share with you the approach that we're taking with this project again. Some initial findings from phase one. Now, we're not anywhere near recommendations phase, so we're just looking at the current state right now, so don't expect recommendations today. That's a couple of months away. And then, three discussion items that I want to kind of get your thoughts on the first. In your opinion, what is organizational effectiveness look like? The next one, what's Hanover doing really well right now? Because one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we're identifying internal best practices. In addition to identifying the third item, what needs to improve? So, from your perspective, that's kind of where we'll really depend on where you're at. So, as far as the project status, we're into phase two, the review. So, four phases, launch, review, design, recommend. Launches, we have launched. We're now in review. Interviews with the senior team have happened. Staff questionnaire is out. We're continuing to encourage all staff to get back some really, it's about a five-minute questionnaire. Really gets their thoughts from their perspective as a member of the team, where they see opportunities for improvement and what they think is going well. So, that's out there. We're getting feedback right now. Departmental group session, I just got back from a great group, your Parks, Recreation, and Culture Group. So, we had a session with them today, and we have three more coming up on Thursday. So, we're doing those, the departments that have more than one or two people, the bigger departments, we're doing a group session with that. And then, we've put out information to all staff for one-on-one conversations with me, whether it's a two-minute conversation or a twenty-minute conversation, and want to make sure that all staff have the opportunity to talk to me directly. Things that they wouldn't typically bring out in a group session, and that's a kind of a safe environment for them to do that. And then, our input session today, ongoing discussions with Sherry and the senior team. This phase will end with the Phase Two deliverable, which is the current assessment case for change, so that provides a really good baseline. Without a good baseline, it's tough to go way towards recommendations, so we have to understand the current assessment. Another piece that I didn't put on there, which I should have, is a jurisdictional review. So, we're looking at five municipalities of a similar size and of a similar population density to Hanover, because you don't want to compare yourself to a town that has a similar population but is huge. You want to have some similarities there in the type of lower tier, similar population, similar population density. So, we're going to be doing that as well. That's Phase Two. Then, we move into Phase Three, which will be October, design principles, and then you're looking at building the design for the future. So, now that we understand what the baseline is, what the current assessments are, what the opportunities for improvement are, then let's look to the future. So, how can we build the organization in a way that makes sense functionally? Because you don't want to do this project every few years. Like, if you do it right, you should be good for a decade. You really should. Like, an organizational review, do it right, make sure everything hangs together, the departments are set up right, roles are clear, responsibilities are clear, lines of reporting are clear, and then make sure the foundation is set up, and that should take you with little tweaks far into the future. So, we want to make sure that Phase Three is absolutely critical. Some projects, they actually don't do Phase Three, and I think that's one of the key success factors of the approach that we're going to take to that. Let's design for the future. You don't design for people, you design for function. Then, Phase Four is about recommendations. So, draft recommendations early in Phase Four, and then if there's an iterative process from there to the end of the project to make refinements, to make changes, there'll be more staff engagement at that point, because we want to make sure that the recommendations are challenged by staff. Anybody that could be impacted by the change will have that opportunity to talk about how this will or will not work in their environment. Because you don't want things that look good on paper, but operationally, they don't work. So, it's really important that Phase Four has that iterative process where we put something out there based on good rationale, but then we make refinements to it. So, by the time it hits council again, it's gone through a really good process, a really solid process. And then, the project finishes with a final report, executive summary, a presentation to council asking for your support. So, that's the four phases that we're going through. We're in Phase Two right now. So, as far as the approach that we've taken, I've talked a little bit about this already. Interviews, staff questionnaire, department group sessions, one-on-one staff conversations, a full team presentation next week. I'll be presenting to the full team at the, what do you call it, Sherry? A full team session or?
Yeah, we're just calling it a staff professional development session.
Okay, okay. And so, we wanted, and Sherry invited me to speak about the organizational review, just to give staff a sense of what an organizational review is, because it could be a little scary of a project. So, this is a perfect opportunity to talk to all staff. This is what it is, this is what it isn't, and here's your opportunities for involvement. So, I'll make sure that everybody has my email address. There'll be a QR code that they can go on and and go right to the online questionnaire in real time. So, we're going to make sure that we get as much involvement as possible. To me, you get such good, and I talked about this at the project launch, you get such good ideas and thoughts when you make sure that you engage staff. And they're the experts in the day-to-day, they're the experts. So, really, it would be a disservice to them to not make sure that they're very involved in this process. And a lot of organizations, believe it or not, a lot of organizational reviews don't do that. They don't involve staff at all levels, but this one is, and the result is going to be much better because of it. And then, working sessions with the senior team as needed. You know, whenever we meet, there's not a number there. Whenever we need to meet as a team, we do. And several workshops will be included in that. So, a little bit about Phase One, again, some initial findings. Identifying several internal best practices. I have to say that overall, there seems to be a really solid and healthy staff council relations. I'm hearing that from staff, that they recognize the respect, that it's shown, and they appreciate the respect, because you can't take that for granted, and your staff recognize it. There's a positive vibe, if you will, like, there's a good culture with your staff. It came out today in the session today again, like, you're not broke, the organization is not broken. It's, we're working really well. You've got a really good management team here, young management team, an energetic management team. You want to make sure that they're in good shape, their workload balance is good, and we'll get more into that. I'm asking questions about that during the process, because you definitely do not want to burn out your good staff. Because if the only reward for doing good work is more work, you might have a challenge. So, I'm just letting you know that. If you add more capital projects, you add more things to the table, and you don't have the corresponding increase in the operational budget or the staffing budget, you're in for trouble. So, every municipality has to think about that, and I know you probably have those conversations at budget time. But sometimes, when you're going to have a shiny new splash pad, or you're going to have a shiny new thing, that's all exciting, but there should be an operational component to that. You know, the more you bring in, the more services you bring to the community, you always have to make sure that the operational dollars are going to be there to look after and monitor. I was at your community center. Beautiful, beautiful. I was the first one to see. I saw your ice already. I could have brought them. I could have brought them. It was beautiful. Like, what a beautiful center. Like, it's just, everything's clean, was looked after. It is something you can be very proud of. So, again, you've got a lot of things going. This is a really good time to take a good look at what's going well, where you see opportunities for improvement now and into the future. I'm a little concerned with the number of direct CIO reports that you have right now, and that's based on my experience with how many, what's that sweet spot in direct reports into your CIO? I think you're on the high side, and I think there's going to be a challenge there. So, I'm going to be taking a look at that. Again, no recommendations come out of me today, but that's an area of concern for me when I look at the org chart, and there's a lot of direct reports into Sherry. So, that's going to be, there is that span of authority, that there's best practices there. And when you're on the high side of it, negative things can happen there. So, we'll take a look at that. Number of manager supervisors, I would say, is on the low side. You have a bit of a gap between your directors and your staff. So, we have to take a look at the succession planning impacts of that. And if you look at your departments, you see director, and then you go right away and you see some staff. So, not a whole lot of managers. So, one of the things I'm looking at with the jurisdictional review is what does that look like with similarly sized municipalities, like the number of directors, the number of managers, to make sure you're sized appropriately and there's succession planning. So, when I say succession planning, it's really difficult to have internal succession planning if you're at a staff level and the next layer up is a director level. How do you get that without always having to go out and search for that? So, we have to take a look at it. Again, no recommendations at this point. We have to take a look at it. It's a concern for me right now if I look at it. Pockets of overworked staff across your organization. I am taking a look at your overtime hours and where those pockets are. Again, you have to take a proactive view of making sure that there's a work-life balance of your staff. And when you see your staff overtime hours in certain areas really high, paid, unpaid overtime, whatever it is, you have to take that seriously. So, I'm looking at that kind of stuff as well. And then, in the conversation I've had, there are some areas where it isn't clear who does what, like, where the responsibility for something is, where it starts, where it ends, and then when does it get kicked over to another department, another business area, and who takes that? So, anytime where is that kind of fuzziness or that gray zone, I hone into, I hone into that, because that tells me that there's something that needs to be fixed, because roles responsibility have to be clear. Like, you have a lean, you have a very lean team. You cannot afford to have different positions doing similar things. So, we have to do whatever we can to make sure that we consolidate functions in the right positions. And there are some gaps, capacity, skill set related gaps, where maybe work isn't done to the quality it needs to be. Maybe you don't, some staff are doing a certain kind of thing off the sides of their desk. It really doesn't fit the job description, but they're doing it because nobody else can. I'm going to be looking at those sorts of things. So, again, taking a hard look at the organization and making sure that, the other question I'll ask is, are those activities that you're involved in, are they important? Or is it work that's being done that really isn't a core service? So, I'll be looking at those sorts of things. So, that's some initial direction and some of the initial thoughts that I have going forward. Again, there's no, I know you're very action-oriented groups, and you're wanting to think about recommendations right now, but it's really important to stop, build the baseline first, understand what currently is before we look at, okay, so now what can be? So, the first question that I have for you, and we can just kind of go around the room if it's okay with the mayor, and just, I'd really like your thoughts on this. So, pulling yourself up from Hanover. What do you think organizational effectiveness looks like? So, when you think about this, just describe the features that you think are critically important for a municipality to be considered a well-run organization. What does that look like? Can we just go around the room? Is that okay? So, we'll start with Councillor Hawking. Is that okay? Okay, what comes to your mind?
See, I have to get reminded all the time. Let's turn the microphone on. Well, you know, I was listening closely to your comments, and number one is I strongly want to support a staff and your whole idea of workload, because a staff that is organized, that spins off into the community, people feel good when they talk about their job. I also believe in strong communication among our council, among our staff, and our our citizens, and I believe that's currently in place. A sense of pride in our community from everyone. I think also a willingness to get involved for professional development to improve one's skill level. And finally, a strong, strong system of succession so that we have a program in place to promote within. My belief is that you only hire outside when something is wrong, and I believe that we should encourage our employees by recognizing their abilities and being able to move forward in their development, because if you shut the door for any future encouragement, that gives a negative effect. So, I think those are some of my comments.
Great, very good. Thank you very much. Councillor Fleet.
Thank you, Kelly. Three things have come to mind. I think transparent. I think we all need to be transparent, staff, council. I think it's very important to our community that we are transparent. And the other thing, I think we really need to listen to our taxpayers. They're the ones that keep our community going. They fund the dollars to make the P and H Center and those, sort of, this building operate. And I think we also have to be very responsible in how we spend our money, taxpayers' dollars. In this time of things maybe slowing down a little bit, I think it's really important that we take a minute and really look at how we spend our taxpayers' dollars. So, those are the three things that I feel that it's important to a well-run organization.
Thanks very much. Councillor Dickert?
Yes, thank you. You know, as far as an effective organization, I guess, been through some changes through my career as well, and I think I prefer the flatter organization, so we say, and I know you made reference to adding some levels in there. I think we need to be very careful before we would do anything like that. An ineffective organization has a good chain of command, and I think that we have we have strong leaders, and those leaders have to be accessible to their people. We need to be nimble. We need to be able to change direction when we have to, because every day can offer some surprises as to what your priorities are, it seems. So, as much as you need strategic planning and you need to have that direction, you also need to be able to adapt to change. I think it's important that we aren't duplicating services. I like the fact that you mentioned stop doing some work or to look at that that will be part of the process, because, as you said, when you add a splash pad, you got to make sure that all the other things you continue to do are required, part of that core service. So, you know, to me, to sum it up, a lean, nimble organization that can adapt and implement change and is easily accessible to the taxpayer.
Yeah, very good. Thanks very much. Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, Kelly. You gentlemen have touched on a lot of these things. I did like your comment about consolidating functions in the right condition so that there's not a fuzzy overlap between certain certain tasks that are out there, and I think we're pretty good about that, but that may be something that could take another look at. I do appreciate the fact that we have some strong leaders with the, with our administration that seem to have a very good rapport with their staff, and hopefully that continues. But succession planning, obviously, because we are all getting just a little older every day, so that, I think that's important as well.
Oh, yeah. All good. Okay, good, good. Councillor Cable, you're up.
Thank you, Kelly. Certainly, I think organizational effectiveness.
Councillor Cable, you're muted.
Is it working now?
Still muted.
Is that better?
Councillor Cable, we're going to move on to Councillor Sackel, and you can hopefully correct that, maybe.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Yes, you're right, Councillor Hudson. The gentleman got to go first, so they stole the thunder, if you will. So, I'm going to be repeating myself, I think, from what you have said, but my first comments that I wrote down were open communication, not only with staff members to each other, but staff and council, as well as with the community. And speaking of the community, a good social presence, I think, in social media with that transparency that was spoken of is really important. I also felt that we don't want to duplicate things, and we want to remain efficient in what we do.
Councillor Cable, try again.
Is it working now?
No.
Okay, I'm not on mute.
Is he able to put it in a chat?
Can you put it in the chat? Do you have, can you type that fast?
I can put it on the chat. I can also call it.
No, he's in his office. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, he's going to work on it.
Here you go.
All right. So, again, a lot has been said, but I think the organization to look effective, to be effective, we need knowledgeable staff and council, elected officials. We also need skilled staff. And we need to be organized, whether that's council or staff, and we need good and varied communication skills across the board. And Councillor Cable is still working. We can always come back to you, Councillor Cable.
Yeah, we'll come back to that for sure. Okay, so the next discussion I have had is what is Hanover already doing really well? So, when you think about that, based on your perspective and what you hear from Hanover residents, in what areas do you think the town is already excelling? What comes to mind when you hear that? And we'll start with Councillor Hudson.
I think we're excelling at trying to get the information out to the general population through social media. My concern is for our aging demographic is that that's not always the best option for them to get the information. They feel a little out of the loop, even though they were perhaps very involved in municipal government before that, so they're feeling a little Municipal government before that, so they're, they're feeling a little lost with that. Um, but the social media part, that's, that's going well. Uh, I'm not convinced that. Everyone, I think pretty much everybody knows the counselors, but I don't know that everyone knows the administration people. Um, that reside in the town, and I think that's important for them to know who helps to run things. Yeah, that's, that's, that's good for now.
Thank you. Um, I too talked, uh, about the social media presence in my notes when I read this. Um, I know that the mayor pointed out last meeting that council and staff attendance at events has been really good. You know, this year and people are noticing that we're in attendance, so that's great to hear. I'm really pleased that the town is now doing the highlights of councils and it's on social media. So people can see what we're gonna be talking about. I think that's really important and I wanna give my congrats to whoever is behind that. Maybe you, Vicky, I'm not sure. Um, there's been lots of coverage with the splash pad. I'm happy to see that and people are excited about it. There's lots in the newspaper, there's lots on social media as well. So I think those things are, are areas that we're excelling in.
And I think we are doing very well in planning for the future, specifically our infrastructure. When you look at what's happening right now, uh. We are planning for the future, so. I, I believe our response to, uh, any issues, any complaints is very good, it's timely, happens quick. Um, it's not always the answer that everyone wants to hear, but there is an explanation and the communication. Um, is good, we can do better. We can always do better with communication and we have a hardworking, dedicated staff and you can, I can see that. I'm sure the residents can see it too.
I agree with the communications. I think we have improved immensely over the past, uh, half dozen years or so with our communication. We're much. More accessible to the general public and, you know, it's rewarding to see how many people actually do. Watch our, our meetings on YouTube and, and all of that, so I think that's a, a positive. Uh, the development community loves us. Uh, when you talk to, uh, developers, they do like dealing with Hannover. They, they feel that, uh. Staff's accessible and they, they do a good job of helping them work through their issues of, of growing our town. Uh, you know, we have great facilities. You mentioned the P and H center, uh, and, and I, our service levels, I think, uh, are quite, well, is. Are, are very admirable, so, uh, those are the things that I see when I make a little summary soon.
The fact that the development community likes working with Hannover like that is not, doesn't happen by accident. That's really good here. Really good here. Councilman Fleet.
Thank you, um. I think we excel, uh, in offering services such as recreation, library, health service, fire and police, uh. Just not to the Hannover residents, but to the surrounding area and non-residents. I think we can't forget about. Who we serve and we serve such a big area as a hub. I think that's where we really excel.
So kind of that idea of punching over your weight, like you're not just dealing with eight thousand Hannover residents, you're dealing with forty thousand regional.
E- exactly, you know, you talk to our police chiefies leasing thirty thousand people on a Saturday, you know, so. We're a hub, a lot of people come and go from Hannover and I think that, you know, we excel at that, so, and I think it's great for our staff and our community to. Serve just not the pe- residents of Hannover, but, uh. Residents, uh, non-residents and residents of the surrounding area.
Thanks, Councilman Fleet. Councilor Hawking?
Thank you, Kelly, uh. I believe the role of council is to, uh, set the stage for, uh, the future and, uh. I am pleased to be in on council a, a number of times and every time. I can honestly say we get things done. We have a tradition in this great community of planning for the future. Being fiscally responsible, plan accordingly and then build our structures. We currently and, and this term and the past term. We're building a new fire station. We're gonna be looking at a new police station. You mentioned our P and H center, you mentioned this building, you look across the street and see our heritage. We are referred to. By outside agencies that, uh, a industrial, well-organized progressive community. And that is a tribute to the councils that are elected. But more importantly, it's to, uh, the excellent staff that we have that implement. The programs and the policies that are initiated by council. We have, uh, an excellent rapport. A, a buy-in and, uh, a willingness of council to, to look at alternatives and listen to what staff recommends us, so. Um, I'm very honored to sit here and be a member of. This council and I look forward to your report. Uh, and, um, my, my eyes on your report will be looking at. At the well-being of our staff because without our staff and their commitment. Uh, we wouldn't, we would be, uh, we wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you.
Do you think that, um, one of the things I notice, do you, and you think this contributes to your effectiveness as a council is that you stay in your swim lanes? Like you stay with the responsibility of lower-tier government, like not all lower-tier governments do that. It seems like you do here. And I feel like that is a, a, a very big positive that you have going for you. As a council, you recognize what your sphere of influence is. Do you, would you agree with that? It seems like it to me looking at you.
It's, it's, it was drilled in, into me, uh, way back by, uh, uh. A polished politician who's, who said to me, he said, uh. You know, just stay in your lane and do what, do what you're elected to do and don't get your nose. Into the day-to-day operation. That's not your job. Your job is to set the tone, to set the, the direction. And, uh, hire good staff to, to implement it. And I think we've done an excellent job in that. And currently we have, uh, outstanding staff. The thing I worry about is, um. We're giving them too much, like. You know, uh, you can say, oh, let's be more efficient, but, uh, what is, if, what's the cost of that? I mean. Uh, so we, we have, and I'm pleased that you're doing it. I agree with Warren that we don't want to set up a hierarchy that we've got things going, you know, through different stages because, um. Uh. We, we just, we just gotta make sure that, uh, we don't duplicate services, that we're efficient. And we're also effective at the same time.
Thanks, appreciate that. Did we get anything from?
Councilor Cable, did you wanna test your audio?
Does it work now?
No. That's too bad. Can you try calling in? Cause I think your input would be beneficial.
Okay.
Hopefully that works.
Worst-case scenario, I'll make sure he, he'll send me something as well. Hey, we'll keep, we'll keep coming back. Okay, we talked a little bit about that, really good feedback so far, but the last, last, uh, discussion, what needs to improve. So from your perspective as elected representative. You're here, council, you know, every, every time and you hear what the residents of Hannover say, um, you hear what your staff. Talk about and what's important to your staff and. When you kind of distill all of those inputs, what do you feel like in this organization or do we really have to investigate? Cause it really has to get better. I'll start with you again, Councilor Hawking.
I, I guess. The one thing that I hear. From, um, the circle that I hang out with is, um. Council should. Clap or touch or slap their backs as a positive thing for all the services. That, that we deliver in this community. Um, and, and secondly, please don't get. Hung up on. On tax increases at the expense of our services. Uh. I've never had a person complain to me about, um. Tax increases, although, uh, I know this year is gonna be a tough year for us. But, um. I think we're known for the services that we offer, especially in, uh. Uh, the recreational side of our operation and, um. I think there's this thing from the community, things are going well. There's the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Um, please don't, um, get into a mentality that we have to. Cut services at the expense of, uh, uh, a so-called, uh, tax levy, so. It, it'll be a fine discussion this year, um. Uh, we've always done well for what citizens want, so hopefully we can keep delivering it. But maybe we have to look at different ways to, uh, to provide those services and, uh, I just don't know the answer to that right now.
And that's why we're doing the project too, like we'll, we'll be looking at those sorts of things, but it's that, that fine line, that balance, trying that balance of making sure that. What the core services are being, being paid for and you have enough staff work, but also a recognition that. You know, it's taxpayers' money we're talking about, so there, it has to be as lean as absolutely it can be, right? Councilman Fleet.
Thank you, um, back to communicating with our residents. I think it's very important that we communicate with the residents, uh. You know, that's, I hear it all the time, uh, keeping up to date what's going on, uh, in our community. Uh, cost-saving ideas, you know, do we have to start looking at, uh, contracting services? In order to take the workload and pressure off our existing staff. I don't know, uh, if that's something we have to look at going forward. Um, but, uh, I'm open to any idea to, uh, keep our staff, uh, safe and healthy and happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Fleet. Councilman Dickert?
Yeah, thank you, um, you know, I, I've, I read your question, you know, it was. The perspective and what we hear from the residents and sometimes what you hear from the residents. It's a lack of understanding of how we operate that, uh, that drives some of those comments, but, uh, uh. You know, bylaw enforcement is likely one that you, you get a lot of calls on and, uh, and people saying, you know, well, you know, we need to give the bylaw. Staff the tools then to do that, you know, when they have a, a concern about something in the town, so, uh, that seems to be an area I hear a lot of feedback on. Um, you know, it's. Your report makes mention of, uh, overworked staff. Perception on a lot of the town residents is, is that we're overstaffed, so, uh, I don't know how we strike that balance and how we educate. Everyone to. Recognize what the right level is and, and I don't know what the right level is, uh, you know, you may have mentioned about the number of reports that, uh. That anyone has and, and I, I gotta be honest, I don't know how many reports our senior leader has. I don't know how many reports our, our C A O has, direct reports. Um, I know at a time when I was, uh, still working, you know, the optimal number was ten, ten direct reports. And you know, you have all the staff underneath that, but, uh. To me, that seemed to work at that time and then there was times, you know, you had more. I know there was times I had up to twenty. There was times I had seven or eight, but, uh, the ten numbers seemed pretty decent, but I, again, I have to be honest, I don't know what our level is here. So, uh, perhaps it's an education piece that we need to, uh, to bring everybody up to a, a higher level of understanding. To, to deal with some of those misconceptions. Uh, you know, one other thing I hear is, is our downtown is. Not everybody's really excited about how thriving it is, I guess you'd say, and, uh, perhaps we need to do some work in that area. Um, and, uh. You know, we talk about our, our border expansion and, um, you know, it ramps up for a while, then it goes quiet, so I think, uh, there's opportunities for us to. To be a little more transparent or. Whatever the case might be and if there's no action, maybe it's just an update to say, you know, they're, you know, we're working on it, but there's just nothing to report at this time, so those are my observations.
Thanks, Councilor. Mayor?
So I think we need to, um. Continually keep our communication methods up to date. There's always new, whether it's Snapchat or TikTok or whatever's the latest thing out there, we need to keep that. Happening and maybe get council involved too, cause I don't know anything about those. Um, ways of communicating on social media. And I do know, because I am in the office on a daily basis, that staff is very lean. I can see it, I, you know, with the workloads and with the questions I ask and can we do this, can we try and try this? And what I find as the result is there's no room for innovative or creative. Uh, projects or ideas because staff are just doing their job, trying to keep their head above water. So when I come up with these ideas and say, hey, maybe we should try this, it's like. Well, yes, maybe we should, but there's no resources for it. So hopefully this, um, initiative will. Give us some ideas on how to find a solution for that. And just before we move on, Councilor Cable, please test your audio again.
Does it work now? It's not, it's not working. It's not coming through? Are the speakers on mute?
Oh, you're chatting with Tanya, okay. They'll wave when they, they've got.
Sounds good. Councilor Sackle?
Um, I struggled with this one and I got thinking about when I was campaigning and what people were saying to me when I was knocking on doors. And I remember particularly young father with a bunch of little kids. Saying there's not enough for me to do with these kids all day and. I can't afford to be in all these fancy programs and then I, I'm thinking now, two years later. Gosh, we had a wonderful Hannover fair a few weeks ago and it was perfectly free. It was wonderful. And so many people showed up. I hope that father was there with his kids. And we've got a splash pad that's coming to fruition and I hope that father's gonna be there with his kids. So those things came to mind, um. The downtown core, uh, I too have had numerous people speak to me that. It could look nicer, we could have more things and if they knew and understood, somebody over on that side said that too. People don't really understand what council does and what the town of Hannover can and cannot do sometimes. And you have to make that, you know, clear to them in a very nice and, and pleasant way when you speak to them about it. But, uh, yeah, lack of understanding is, is one thing and, and perhaps again, back to the communication that we have to. Have between the residents and ourselves. Um, that customer portal, I have talked about that numerous times. People still don't know about it. And when I tell them, oh, but it's so efficient. I did it before I even made it on council and it worked beautifully and they got back to me so efficiently. Um, and I too want to say how, how much I appreciate the staff here in town. Uh, I love the staff members. I, I do think we have some good communication and we can only do for them, um, what we can. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Hudson?
So I won't mention the downtown because I think we've covered that. That is one of the things that, uh, that I do hear a lot about out there in the world. The other thing is to, um, appreciate the heritage and our past, where we've come from. There seems to be a lot of discussion that we, we do move forward and we're, they're grateful for that, but they do wanna. Recognize where we've come from and how we got to where we are, so there seems to be, um, a lack of. The history or heritage and also with our community artists, they're always looking for. Um, and. It's, it's a fine line. They're looking for somewhere to be able to show what they have. And yet I'm sure they don't have funds available to set up something, so those are the two things that I have. Found out there, arts, culture, heritage.
Just before you go on, um, Councilor Cable, I see your, um, by phone. If you wanted to start right at the beginning, question one.
Does it work now? Hello? Hello?
Councilor Cable, um, can you unmute on your phone?
I am unmuted. It should be unmuted. Hello? Hello? Hello?
Uh-huh, we got, we have a hello.
Hello? Is it working?
Try it again.
Quite equally, does it work? Hello? Hello?
Yeah, so Brandon, we are hearing you via uh, Mayor Patterson's computer, but not necessarily through the system. So we're good to continue with the input? Is that what I'm hearing? Yes?
You can hear me now? Does it work?
Can everybody hear Brandon? Okay? Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, so I approached this question thinking about what is within the control of the town as a lower tier municipality. And I think a lot of these points were already hit on, but um, things that would need to improve, certainly um, diversified methods of information sharing. Um, the ways that we provide updates to the community um, on town uh, projects and on council information. Um, whether that ends up being, you know, going back to um, articles in the newspaper, social media, um, you know, maybe there's other tools that, that other communities use that we haven't thought of. Um, supporting growth of downtown businesses and combination options. Um, it's certainly something that I think is within the town sphere of influence for, uh, for us to work on. The vibrancy of the downtown, so um, things like our celebrations, festivals, events. Uh, and then I also think about um, building a walkable community um, with improved sidewalks, tree boulevards, bike lanes, um, things like that. So I think certainly when I think about items that need to improve, I think really, I think I would think of it more from a economic development tourism lens, which is maybe an area that um, we currently have, have limited resources in.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Good that you were able to to uh, offer that, Counselor. Um, and so what were I can't handle listening to my voice back-talking myself. Is it good? Okay, good, good. So some of the things that uh, Counselor uh, Cable, Cable talked about is some of the things that came on as a strategic plan as well, right? So now, now that we're in the organizational review side, we have to make sure that the things that you've identified as a council as a priority, there's a spot for it. So there's, there's a staff person to do it, right? So it doesn't mean a new staff person necessarily, but it needs a home. So now that we're doing an organizational review, we have to make sure we're finding homes for the things that council has said is important. And some of those things say, let's take, take the downtown revitalization. Well, where does that fit? Who is on the hook for that? Doesn't mean that that person has to do all the work, but somebody's got to own it. Somebody's got to own that piece of it. So that's where we're at now with an organizational review, identifying those key things that matter most, that you've said matter most. They have to find themselves in the job descriptions. And then, and that's where we're at right now. So we'll go through that process. And if we've identified those gaps where some of the things that came up today and some of the things that came out of the strategic plan, there's not a home for it in a department or a business area. We have to figure it, okay. So what do we do? Is that a, is that new staff? Is it shared services with, with another municipality? Is it something else has to fall off? So we have to figure out what's that, what's that next step? Organizationally, how do we, do we achieve what we said matters most? And so that's where we're, we're coming, how we're coming at this organizational review. Um, there needs to be owners. There needs to be owners of some of these outcomes that we've talked about. And again, doesn't mean that that person has to do all the work, but at the end of the day, somebody has to be account accountable for that outcome that we're searching, where, that we're seeking to get. If there's not that ownership, it's not going to get done. Bottom line. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. So this is really, really good uh, feedback for me for sure. Um, so the next steps for the project is to wrap up here. We'll finish up the phase two discussions, the sessions, and there's an analysis that it's going on. Uh, complete that second uh, phase deliverable, case for change, current assessment. And then we'll just slide right into phase, phase three, basically the same week and look at that functional model. So the functional model will be kind of a, a, a functional model, no positions at this point. But the departments and business units make sure that things hang together. Well, we'll look at different options as a senior team. And we'll say, does that work for Hanover? It might work for Godrich. Doesn't mean it's going to work for Hanover. It might work for another, another jurisdiction and this is how they set up, but it might not work for here. So we have to look at, we'll have to look at the functional model, build a preferred functional model and that ends phase three. Once we have that, then we move into the detailed work, the rec, detailed recommendations. And that's where you, you have very detailed recommendations that explain the rationale behind it. Um, the actions required and the final report will also include an implementation plan that sequences and costs things out. So there, there's a recognition that there's a financial component to this. And that will be what that final implementation plan gets to. And so that's what council is going to be asked to approve after phase four. And that is the end of my presentation. Two minutes to go.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any further comments for Kelly? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. Uh, just wondering, Kelly, have you identified who the comparator towns and villages or whatever will be that uh, that you're looking at?
Yes, I have. And I've gone through and done some of the work. Um, can't think of him. I mean, I have it on, no, this isn't my computer. I was gonna say I have it on my computer, but it's not it. Sure, you have that offhand. Um, there's Godrich. That I want to do lower tier that has a county over, over at same population, similar population, similar uh, population density. So I took ones in Ontario, so using Godrich, that's a very good comparator, uh, Renfrew, um, Shelburne. Um, the five, there's, I'm only doing, I, I went and got all the information on it already. Um, Arm Prior, Learn Prior, and the last one.
Okay, so sorry, Godrich, Renfrew, Shelburne, Arn Prior and Elmer. So Elmer is the only one maybe you didn't think of, correct?
Elmer, yeah.
Godrich, Renfrew, Shelburne, Arn, Arm Prior, Arn Prior and Elmer. And um, if I can just add to that, that uh, we used our comparator list from our market analysis to um, have uh, some of those suggested communities. And I believe all four of those five, but don't, don't quote me on which four um, were also included in that. So this is a, a different type of comparison, but they are on that market analysis comparator as well.
So I, I, my question was, you know, you looked at size and population. But uh, I don't, you know, we often hear it say Hanover offers a lot of extra services. So do these communities have the same amount of, you know, like the aquatic center and all those good things and services? But uh, because that does have an effect on the staffing that you need and all those things.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. And that's the challenge that you have with your sectional reviews is you're not all, you're never, you're never comparing apples to apples. Some of them do. But all of, all, anything that we come to will have interpretation as that's required. Because Hanover will be unique in certain areas. But what I'm looking for is I'm looking for not, not a, not like that kind of a blank comparison. I'm looking for innovative, interesting uh, uh, functions pulled together and look at interesting uh, positions that pull different kinds of functions into a position. Um, so I'm looking at interesting org design features. In addition to some of the basic things like director, number of directors, number of managers, that kind of stuff, when I'm looking at spans of authority, things like that.
And, and the other question I have is more about your organization, because I believe the bulk of your resources are from the municipal sector or experience. Um, what do you use as far as, you know, reaching out to compare with, you know, how the private sector may be doing some things? And is there an opportunity to, to use some of that? I'm not saying it works all the times, but is what, what resources do you use to, to look at that angle?
Yeah, and, and what we put in the proposal is that my wife uh, does a lot of work on business, on business side. So she has access to really interesting hybrid organizational designs that, you know, they, they cut across. It's not just functional based. There's, there's integrations of, of organization throughout. So she's, she's involved in phase three um, to bring that private sector piece to it. Um, uh, it's, it's, it, it is important because you, you can do some interesting things in municipal government based on what the private sector is doing, but there's only, there's, there's a limitation to its success. Like I, I did some work with a company uh, or sorry, in our municipality, uh, West Okitoks outside of Calgary. And they had a really private sector model. It was a Toyota style model, very flat, like what you were talking about, very flat, and it was not working. Um, because I tried to apply business principles to a government setting and there was, there was a number of reasons why it didn't work. But we add, we, we, we tried to bring the flexibility and the nimbleness of their structure, but put a little bit more of a traditional structure together so that there was succession planning. Because they were so flat, but there was no succession planning. Because there's no way for a staff person to get from a, from that low, lower level to like a managing director or director position, because there was no opportunity to grow into it. So we had to insert a layer that made it a little less flat. While we still tried to, while we still tried to maintain their flexibility and the nimbleness that they got from using more of a a private sector model. So we'll, we will try to bring those findings into it. Um, but I think there are limitations to how far you can go.
Counselor Hawking?
Uh, this is just a question for uh, my interest. Is there any way, Kelly, you can um, make a comparison of the five, well, six included us with regard to the amount of resources we spend on our structure as a ratio of our total tax levy? So that um, we may be underspending or we may be, or is that not a relevant, a relevant data?
It, it sounds like it is, because that would be good information to have. But the, the quality of that information is only good if you can identify that you're comparing like functions with like functions. And that's, that's, and you can do it, but that's very time consuming. Because then you, it's not a matter of having a, a brief discussion with the C A O and looking at their org chart and stuff. It's a matter of saying, okay, so when you say you have this position, are they doing the same sorts of things that it sounds like a similar, similarly titled position is doing in Hanover? Like are they, are they doing the same things? Can you compare them? And that's, and that's the challenge that you get. The further you go down into the comparison, you re, you realize that there's unique differences in how they're structured. Like it's, it's incredible to me that there's four hundred and forty-four municipalities in Ontario. A lot of them are doing the same things, but they're all structured differently. And, and it, it's a matter of history. It's a matter of skill sets they have internally. It's a matter of community expectations. The size, your density, what facilities you have, like there's so many factors. So the more you go down and then there's, there's no end to a jurisdictional comparative review. Um, that, that will be uh, that will could be a whole four, four months of work. Yeah, okay. And to me, if you want to do a jurisdictional review, so you have like a context, you have some context. But never are you, never will I recommend, just because a municipality is doing something, well, then Hanover should do it. Like it's, there's, I, I think staff feedback, your feedback um, is what's going well, what's not, what's not working. Based on the citizen questionnaire that we did for the previous work, like that's more important to me um, than, you know, doing a, a massive jurisdictional review. And because you know, you know, you come to a finding and then the question is, well, Hanover's not like Godrich because of this. Well, then it throws, then it kind of throws everything. Like what can you compare then? Because every municipality is different, right? So we're just, we'll try to take a more of a holistic approach and say, okay, so is, is Hanover an outlier in anything? Is there something that you're, you're way off base with? And we'll kind of, we'll kind of go, we'll go there. And we've, I've used the one-on-one conversations that I had, that I've had with the senior team to kind of uh, identify or target those areas that we want to look at in more detail with the jurisdictional review. So it's already targeted in a way that is going to make it more adaptable for our use.
Counselor Fleet?
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, Kelly, you know, I find it, Hanover's unique that we're a hub. And I don't know if you run into that. So like we're a service community, we're a hub. Like we, like we touched on the thirty, forty thousand people that come to Hanover and shop and use our facilities. And as a taxpayer, my tax dollars are being used to supply those services to the area. And you know, you can compare us, say to Godrich, but they're a tourist town. You can compare us to Shelburne that has a Honda manufacturer just down the road. So we are unique that we are a hub community and we do attract a lot of people to Hanover that uses our services. And that's the way I see Hanover being. We're not going to have a car plant, unfortunately, but uh, we are a service community.
Yeah, I'd say that's a good point. Yep.
Okay, so thank you very much, Kelly. Uh, very uh, um, exciting to see this start. And uh, apologies for the technical difficulties and we will uh, have this worked out and I just um, so I, oh, we will have the technical difficulties worked out before things uh, go farther. And by the time you come back to update us. So thank you. Okay, so um, what, what I was saying on, online, there is a, someone watching on Facebook and they can hear uh, Brandon, but we can't. So we need to hear him, but and um, Counselor Cable, I do want to say that if you feel you want to speak more with Kelly, one-on-one, you're more than welcome to do that. So, all right, moving on, on the agenda, um, item eight, we do not have any business arising from the minutes. So item nine is staff reports and the first one, nine point one is report P R C ten twenty twenty-four. The subject is the arena L E D lighting project. It's from Laura Kristen, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. And I have Deputy Mayor Dickert and Counselor Fleet. All yours, Laura.
Thank you, worship. So the uh, current P and H Center Arena has uh, metal halide lighting fixtures and bulbs. They are original um, to the uh, P and H Center, which is approximately fifteen years old. Um, converting these L E D, um, converting to L E D fixtures has been a popular lighting solution uh, for many uh, recreational facilities. As there is um, newer technology, there's benefits as well as a return on investment. So um, the local authority services, which we often use L A S as our short form in, in uh, in the municipal world, we've certainly used L E S on, in um, multiple programs. And specifically, um, the facility lighting surface is through the L E S program. It has helped municipalities across Ontario upgrade their lighting services and systems to be efficient L E D fixtures. And um, it's, it's certainly something that's developed, kind of that turnkey ability for municipalities to upgrade their facilities. Um, with, taking some of the legwork, they've, they've completed some of that legwork um, for us. As per the Town of Hanover's procurement of goods and service policy, council may be authorized by a resolution that particular transactions need not be tendered. So this is part of my recommendation this evening is that um, the council um, accept the procurement process that has been undertaken by L A S in order to um, move forward with this pro, project. Um, the L S, L A S program um, is, provides benefits, being the Canadian Free Trade Agreement compliant and also provide and also provides that turnkey approach that relieves town staff of preparing that um and reviewing R F Ps or tenders, and specifically, um, in this case, for the supply and installation of the L E D fixtures. So in previous years, we've used L A S to procure street lighting conversion program in twenty fifteen. Um, we also utilized L A S for the enterprise light vehicle leasing in twenty twenty-three. And as well, um, there was a fire truck procurement um just this year in twenty twenty-four. So based on these past projects, based on the uh reputation of L A S, um, we've pursued this uh partnership um for this particular project um for the conversion project. Um, so as part of that, I was um have been introduced to Conrad Lighting Solutions. Um, they have completed a a full review of our existing s- system. Um, they've provided that design and are also going to be um completing the coordination, the supply, and the installation. Um, I have provided um a summary portion of their submission that's been attached. And um we will work with them collaboratively to ensure that this project um meets the needs of the facility. So what has been proposed is this retrofit will include uh the replacing of the fixtures that are over the ice surface, as well as over the spectator seating area, as well as over the concourse, and then there's six um exit, ice exit areas. So there's a total of a of a hundred fixtures um that would be um included in this project. The existing electrical drops will be reused. Um, that particularly is an advantage because we have an insulated ceiling. Um, so you know, that provides um advantages to have that insulated ce- ceiling. Every time you're um putting holes in that, you're compromising the that insulation um as well as it's um using the existing uh drops meets our needs as well as um it keeps the costs um under control as well. So there's a number of benefits that L E D lighting offers. I'm just, I'm not going to go into each detail, but I'll just give a summary. First is um the extended lifespan of of the lighting fixtures and the operating hours that L E D provides versus the uh current uh fixtures. Um, there's lower maintenance costs that are proposed. Of course, we're we're very familiar. The third one would be energy savings that we're that we will be realizing. Um, the L E D fixtures is up to sixty percent less um in uh consumption. Um, number four is enhanced efficiency. Number five is also having those advanced control options. So for example, um, when we have a recreational skate, the lighting levels may not need to be as high or as bright as when we have the barons on the ice would be a great example. And then, of course, the warranty um is for five years. And um for the products themselves and the supplier, Conrad Lighting, provides a one-year warranty against the workmanship for um their installation. So the financial implications, um, I have provided the um the options as well as um the costs and estimated incentive. Um, so right now, our um estimated incentive program, it's, it is guaranteed till the end of the year. And um if we were to expand past that, we would have to reapply. Um, but that is something that we have currently estimated at an incentive of seven thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, option two is uh what's being recommended. Um, the option two will achieve that that foot candle output level um that is targeted for the junior C or the or the baron's hockey programming. And um based on option two, um, we would be coming in at uh a total cost of fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the project. That is including the taxes that we're anticipating, as well as that that rebate as well. Um, the cost of this project has been uh approved within the twenty twenty-four capital budget um at sixty thousand dollars. So we're within that. The recommendations before you this evening is that report P R C ten twenty-four Arena L E D lighting project be received. So that council accept the procurement process undertaken by L A S for their facility lighting turnkey service. Third, that council accepts and awards the proposal submitted by Conrad Lighting Solutions in the amount of sixty-two thousand plus H S T. And further, that the mayor and C O be authorized to enter into the agreement with Conrad Lighting for the supply and installation of the L E D lighting at the P and A Center. Questions?
Thank you, Laura. Who wants to start? Counselor Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. Do we have something in place to be able to follow up and track the benefits and returns on the investment? Or is that something that we ever do? That's my first question. I have a few.
So through your worship, to in order to track the savings, like certainly, you know, at the end of the year, our our expenses are all tracked. I think the tricky part with this is that sometimes rates go up, but you're using less. So then, at the end of the day, your bill is, could be the same. You know, I'm I'm just estimating right now. So there are factors involved with that. Um, but you know, really, at the end of the day, we're hoping that even with any increases in energy, which I don't know if that's going to be the case, or if it if prices go up or down, you know, that's that's certainly, that's a little bit too fluid for me to predict. Um, but that is a challenge, Counselor Hudson, of of knowing exactly how much money it will save us based on that energy rate. So um, so yes, we track it, but you know, energy rates could be impacted.
And so would, in tracking it, would you bring a report back to say, you know, we've, we've had a look at this and this, the suggestion that we did this and it was great, and this is what we've potentially saved? Do we ever follow up on anything like that? I'm not, I'm not aware, so maybe you can help.
Certainly, if that's the request of council, staff could could absolutely do that at this point. Um, you know, it's it's also something to keep in mind. It's not just about that energy savings as well. I do want to just bring up the potential for staff time for and and Tom and I counted it up. I think we have five ballasts right now that are um inoperable, and I think there was about twelve um bulbs as well. So just keep that in mind of of staff time as well as um like the maintenance costs. So bringing in electricians um in order, now, they've estimated that on average of about fifty-five hundred dollars. I did a look, um, you know, twenty twenty-one, we were fifty-three hundred, twenty nineteen, we were sixty-seven hundred. Twenty twenty-three, we were eleven hundred. So there's quite a mix. So I can't disagree with that fifty-five hundred. It's an estimate. It really is. Um, so I think those are other things to factor in as well.
And then my other question, uh, it did mention that you would be able to do a light level control over the ice surface. The um, the concourse, will it have controls as well, or is it just over the ice surface?
It's just over the ice surface.
So the seating area, those lighting, that lighting in the concourse will be on or off?
Correct.
And did we reach out to some of those other municipalities that were mentioned um regarding which light levels they had gone with and how their, how their successes were?
So I have reached out to the the references. I haven't heard back from all of them based on today's say. I will make sure that that's, that I get all of that information back. And um Counselor Hudson, the the line of questioning is a little bit more um because it's very different. The ceiling height is very different. So for example, um, you know, the the um, the forty-eight thousand L M is is maybe not even recommended. It was more about getting that reference on, you know, what happens if something's down? Like, if you if you have an air, how quickly do they respond? That's the line of questioning versus, um, you know, how did you experience the forty-eight hundred L M? So the, just to put that in context, it there's, there's a lot of factors, you know, if they, if it's mounted too high, then you're, um, you know, you're losing light. If it's mounted too low, you could have hot spots on your ice, for example. So each facility, there's so many different models and fixtures and brands and um, so it wasn't based on that information.
Great explanation. Thank you.
Counselor Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, worship, and thanks, Laura. Uh, just curious, when you say the concourse area, that doesn't include the walking track and the lion's den then? And what is the current system in there? Is that, is that a future project that we're considering, or where are we at with that?
Through your worship. So um concourse area is that I I'm going to say twelve feet behind the drink rail in the arena um viewing area. The walking track as well as um the lobby, the main lobby. So the walking track hasn't been touched, main lobby hasn't been touched. Um, the classroom lounge pool viewing area have not been touched. That would be a future phase if we were going to consider that. So the whole building won't quite be L E D, but pool deck, for example, done, change rooms done. Um, so this is just phase two of a larger part project.
I have a, oh, go ahead, Counselor Fleet.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Laura. The system we have in place right now over the ice surface, you can dim those lights. Can we not, like? Uh, they can be adjusted.
So it's based on how many come on. So we do have controls on um to make it so it's not as bright or dim, but it's how many lights come on versus dimming them. Does that make sense? So if we have a hundred lights over the ice surface right now, um, we have certain controls where maybe only sixty of the the bulbs come on versus we could have put on in the new system, we could put all a hundred bulbs on and just dim them a little.
Yeah, just from experience, I know, you you know, you might stop on the ice and then staff will all of a sudden, it'll become a lot brighter. Um, is there, I guess, I know from past experience, like, say, huffer, puffer, hockey, hockey, for example. Uh, you, you know, we can't go on the ice until the lights are fully on. Uh, is there a liability issue if lights are at a certain level and they should be brighter when a person steps onto that ice surface?
I'm not really familiar with the liability issue of a lighting level. Um, so I I really, I mean, uh, lighting, adequate lighting is recommended. I'm not sure what you'd be looking for for an answer on that.
I just know that, you know, guys go out on the ice when the lights aren't fully lit. I'm just wondering, what if they fell or tripped, or maybe they should, well, that's not necessarily the case. Um, it, just question.
Oh, go ahead, Sherry.
I was just going to say, like, reality is that perhaps the staff leave the lights off to discourage the users from not going on the ice during a time when they are not permitted to use it. And there would be some liability related to that, right? So those users are not permitted to be on there at that time. They go on of their own choice and get hurt. And as we said, yes, the municipality becomes uh potentially liable in those circumstances. So again, it's it's a mechanism perhaps more to discourage the users from going on during a time that they're really not permitted to go on the ice.
Counselor Cable, I see your hand is uh raised, so I'm going to try this. Just give me one second.
Thank you, worship. Did it work? Hello? It's not working now?
Oh, go ahead. That was Tanya. She's got it fixed for you. Go ahead.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering, um, Laura, would it ever be beneficial to have that wireless dimming capability over the seating and concourse area? Like, would there ever be an occasion where we would want to have the ability to dim those lights if something was happening on the on the floor, perhaps not during an ice season?
Through your worship, yeah, that like we can, I'm trying to think of a time when we'd want to dim.
I was just going to add, like, you have the ability with those concourse lights to turn them off, which means only those um lights that stay on for emergency purposes are on, which I don't know how many that is, but you have that ability to, in fact, just turn them off, Counselor Cable. So that's your method really to dim. I don't believe you can turn every concourse light off because of the fact of the um lights that must stay on from an emergency, well, for emergency perspectives, but you have that ability to turn them off as such. There have been times that's the only light that's been on, really and truly.
Counselor Cable, anything further?
Is the current plan to install the lights during the current ice season?
Yes, it is. So the expected time that they're going to need for install is about two to three days. Um, it's about four to six to receive the actual lights. And once a, once an order goes in, about four to six, so that kind of takes us to um November. So the the idea is, is that two to three days is what they will typically need for install, but they won't need the entire time. So typically, our ice surface, for the most part, during the day is open, with the exception of maybe an adult tot skate or um a senior skate. Um, but for the most part, um, it doesn't interrupt regular programming. They are suggesting that one night of ice cancellation would be the best practice. Um, so they will work with us to kind of find that um that time period, which there's minimal impacts um to our users.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, the company, um, Conrad Lighting, they're going to recommend the lighting level, right?
Yeah, through your worship. So that's one of the things, you know, I kind of talked to them about saying, you know, give me, give me a thought process on, you know, why we would um look at L E S and and what Conrad, like, what are your competitive advantages? And really, if we, if we were to do this on our own to do the tender process, we would probably have to hire a lighting engineer in order to provide that adequate light level so that we're doing this correct, right? That we're not putting in something that's oversized or undersized. So that's one thing that Conrad does bring to that table, is that they've provided um, you know, a full um foot candle analysis of the, basically, the entire light surface or ice surface. Um, so that's one of the things that they they do bring to the table is that kind of that engineering.
Very good. So then only staff will have control of the dimmer switch? Because it may get out of whack?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And then would you have to call this company back to correct anything, or you would have like a manual that you could fix it?
Yeah. So there's four pre-programmed um settings. So in our case, for example, maybe we're going to have one that we call junior C, maybe we call one um public skating, you know, just, they're they're definitely would be at two different levels. So we have those, we have the ability for us to choose as staff what those four programmable settings are. Anything outside of that, we can just dim manually. So ideally, we get the four ones, we get the four pre-programmed correct based on our experience, and and I think we can get it. Um, and then if if we do need to modify that, I suppose you are correct, we would have to probably ask for Conrad to help if we did make a mistake on that programming.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of P R C ten twenty twenty-four? That is carried. Good job, Laura. Lots of questions. All right, nine point two is report CL 0524. And the subject is the Soggy Municipal Airport Commission Corporate Bylaw and Procedure Bylaw Confirmation. It's from our clerk, Vicky McDonald, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor, Counselor Hawking and Counselor Sackel. Vicky?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Soggy Municipal Airport Commission began a process in early 2022 to update their corporate bylaw as well as develop a procedural bylaw. The corporate bylaw was updated in coordination with legal counsel and with the input of clerks of the member municipalities. The commission under the Corporations Act can pass bylaws that are that are in accordance with the act and their letters patent. Before such bylaws can take effect, however, they must be approved by the members at an annual general meeting or confirmed in writing by the members. So as the town of Hanover, municipality of Brockton and municipality of West Gray comprise the three member municipalities, it was proposed instead of calling an annual general meeting um that each municipality pass a motion um confirming their acceptance of um the updated updated corporate bylaw and the procedural bylaw. So as such, the two bylaws um are presented to Hanover Council this evening for their confirmation. There are no financial implications associated with this report. And the recommendation is that report CL 0524 Soggy Municipal Airport Commission Corporate Bylaw and Procedural Bylaw Confirmation be received and that council approves Soggy Municipal Airport Commission Bylaw One, Procedural Bylaw, and Bylaw Two, Corporate Bylaw as presented. And I'll take any questions?
Thank you, Vicky. Um, are there, Counselor Hawking?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to publicly thank um Vicky and her colleagues, Jamie Atkinsola from West Gray and Fiona Hamilton, the clerk from Brockton, who worked very diligently and our uh their expertise was greatly appreciated by the commission as we have uh finally got this uh for for your approval. So thanks, Vicky.
Deputy Mayor Dickert?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just the one question I had, and and I think it's in there. So does this firm up the uh debate about if a partner decides to leave that there's no compensation for that partner? Um, that was one of the sections I read there said, and it looks like Counselor Hawking has an answer.
No, if I could give a little uh review. So the corporate bylaw had to be updated under uh proposed legislation by the provincial government uh for non-for-profit. We got into the process and we found out that we we didn't need to do that. But at the same time, we needed to update the corporate bylaw. Corresponding to that, Catherine, our secretary, was responsible for the procedural bylaw that that attaches this. There is a separate bylaw, which is really the funding agreement. That if you remember, you you probably it slipped by you at the Allenwood meeting, I had mentioned that in September of 2021, Brockton initiated a meeting between the two municipalities to go over what was called the Funding Agreement, which talked about how how we contribute to the the airport, what happens if what a municipality doesn't like what's going on. Uh, and that is still outstanding there. And uh my my hope is that we can get together and finalize that. But unfortunately, the last date of that that um agreement was 2012, so it's it's long overdue, but that is a separate issue for work in progress. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I am aware there are a couple of housekeeping items that will be corrected or added. And other than that, um, Counselor Cable, questions? No? All right. I will call the question then. All in favor of um CL 0524? That is carried. Item nine point three is report CL 0624. The subject is the National Disability Employment Awareness Awareness Month. It's from our clerk, Vicky McDonald, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor, Counselor Hudson and Counselor Fleet. Vicky?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, as council will recall, at the August 15th meeting, a presentation was received from Monica Singh Sures regarding um NDEAM, the National Disability Employment Awareness Month, um, and the October 17th Light It Up For MDN NDEAM event. Sorry, I'm tripping over my tongue. Council participation was requested by means of a proclamation declaring October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the town of Hanover and by lighting municipal landmarks up in purple and blue on October 17th. It was confirmed with staff that the municipal office had the capability of lighting the civic center exterior with colored lights on October 17th. In addition, staff will be encouraged to wear purple and blue and or blue on this day and supported support of Light It Up For NDEAM. A draft proclamation was provided in the package um that with council approval will be shared um with the public. And there are no financial implications associated with this report. And the recommendation is that report CL 0624 National Disability Employment Awareness Awareness Month be received and that council approved the proposed proclamation as presented.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Counselor Sackel?
Thank you, Your Worship. Vicky, I'm wondering if since we're going to go with the staff dressing up in purple or blue, um, could we put that out there? Could we ask the Chamber of Commerce perhaps to um identify this um day and pass that information on to the other businesses in town? And uh as a second question, would we be able to contact Monica and let her know what the town of Hanover has decided with regard to this?
Through you, Your Worship. Thank you, Counselor Sackel. Um, yes, we could definitely share the proclamation and the information with the Chamber of Commerce and the B I D I A if that was appropriate as well. Um, and there will be um confirmation going to Monica Singh Sures that um of what council's actions are, their decision, and a copy of the proclamation.
And I am going to say it will probably be on the town's social media account, maybe under Positive Power, one of those posts, so. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of CL 0624? That, oh, is carried. And I'm sorry, Counselor Cable, did you want to comment? I see you're now on the phone.
No, thank you, Your Worship. Um, appreciate that we're moving forward with this.
Okay, good. Thank you. Item 10 is correspondence requiring action. We do not have any, so we'll move on to reports and correspondence for information. Eleven point one is report CL 0724. It is the meeting schedule of council and committee of the whole for 2025. It's from our clerk, Vicky McDonald. Vicky?
Thank you again, Your Worship. Um, so annually, uh, a schedule of the proposed 2025 meeting dates for Hanover Council is provided to council. Um, it includes our committee of the whole and council meeting dates, um, relevant municipal meetings and conference information for the year. And you'll notice that the finance committee meetings uh and budget meetings have been included this year as well. Um, this is done in accordance with our procedure bylaw 294316. As well, uh, that bylaw provides for the calling of additional meetings as required throughout the year. There are no financial implications associated with the report and um the recommendation is really just that it be received for council information. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. So we'll move on. Eleven point two is uh my report from the AMO Conference. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the town for the opportunity to attend the AMO Conference, which was held in Ottawa and attended by over three hundred three thousand three hundred participants. And it focused on priorities such as homelessness and the opioid crisis, infrastructure for housing, and the need for a fundamental fundamental rethink of the provincial municipal fiscal relationship. Elections were held at um for the Board of Directors and Robin Jones, she's the mayor of the Village of Westport, was elected president and locally. Uh, Barbara Dobreen is the deputy mayor of Southgate, was elected to the County Caucus, and Dane Nielsen, the deputy mayor of the municipality of Gray Highlands, was elected to the Rural Caucus, which is very good for Gray County to have that level of representation. So one of the sessions I attended was youth networking uh breakfast. Today's youth engagement is imperative. There were three AMO youth fellows um who were panelists at that breakfast. And uh they spoke very well and interesting. The three of them were aged twenty to twenty-two. So um this is some of their comments. The youth is considered ages fifteen to thirty years of age, and they view politics as a soap opera. They said it's been transformed into entertainment and it is a political drama. They believe Canadian politics is polarized by different views and different approaches to government. Then uh one comment was made since uh 2016 nationwide, thousands of politicians have quit due to harassment. They also mentioned if you want youth to be engaged, it must be through social media and it has to be concise. And uh important to the youth is climate change, mental health, and housing. Uh, youth need to help. They need help transforming social media life into the real world. And I never thought of that until that was stated. I thought that was things were just normal, but their their world is social media. They they call it real life living. They need to transform one to the other. We need, we must foster engagement with our youth and let them know that their engagement matters, and we need to treat youth equally with respect. Youth engagement is key to a healthy democracy as it leads to better decisions. And the other one I want to highlight is artificial intelligence in the municipal sector. These three panelists included the Information and Privacy Commissioner of Ontario and the CFO and Director of Corporate Services and Innovation from Innisville and the LAS manager of municipal risk management. So that some of their comments were public uh trust is vital for AI, artificial intelligence to work. AI can save money by optimizing services such as salt spreading using weather as weather AI. AI can also translate 911 calls in a different language. It can be used to create smarter, faster, cheaper, and higher quality services. An example, sensors can detect levels of garbage in a 15-foot-deep trash can. A lot of municipalities are putting these in their parks where there's a lot of use, and they're 15 feet down. So it can optimize the route that uh is used for collection of that uh garbage as there would be sensors in that 15-foot uh garbage can. And if it wasn't at a certain level, the route wouldn't even go to that trash can. So again, savings for staff uh in time. And it can also predict flooding rather than having staff driving around looking at ditches that typically would flood. They can have um sensors and that would be predicted. Interesting, Innisville is in the process of hiring a data spec- a data scientist for data-driven decision-making. Four hundred and seventy-one applicants applied. This is the highest number of applicants they've ever had in the history of um people applying for jobs. Part of that interview process was a test to use data analytics, giving applicants all the data they would need to determine where potholes are going to occur. So once they narrowed it down, I don't know how many, whether it was down to six or four, they were given this um task with all the data of the roads, how old they were, like when they were constructed or reconstructed, what type of bitumen is on it, what type of weather they had, and said, tell us where the pot- potholes are going to occur next. And they can do it. Amazing. Like, very amazing. So also, people are using ChatGPT right now. I know um staff are probably using it because I've tried it and I'm sort of old school, and if I've tried it, I'm sure lots of people have tried it. The one thing we need to know, it is an open book to the world. There is no privacy there. So what this can do is it will allow anyone to ask it questions. So you could say, I just received a complaint from a resident. How do I respond? And it will give you the answer if you give it enough information. But you have to realize it's an open book, so you have to redact the names and the area, anything that may determine where that complaint was coming from. It will also prepare reports. If you give it enough information, it will put it together. They did recommend um govai.com. It's being used by Belleville right now, and they spoke very highly of it, and it does have the privacy uh uh features. So it's important that we have AI policies and do a risk assessment with an audit by IT and our insurance provider. And it was stated that there are risks. If you don't adapt, staff and council um need to know the impact of what you are putting into AI. So, and as, just as an example, no one, I, like, I never thought Siri on your phone was AI, but it is. It's artificial intelligence. And I've told a few people I've been cycling on the trail almost daily, and the odd day I might not go, might be tired, might have meetings. This morning, Siri said to me, you should set up for your bike ride. And I went, now how did it know? So it must have a certain number that, you know, it follows, and it said you should be on your bike ride. And I went, wow. So there's artificial intelligence for you, telling me to get on the trails. So anyway, that's uh if if you want to take a look at that um govai.com. I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but I think it would be worthwhile. So it was a good conference, although it rained every day, on and off, carried my umbrella every day, all day long. Whether you needed it or not, you're inside, right? And of course, there's some excellent sessions and some that, you know, you can give or take, but it was a good conference, so. Counselor Hawking?
Thank you, Your Worship. I noted in your um written comments Sylvia Jones was there as Minister of Health. Um, was there any talk uh addressed to her regarding the cutbacks in rural health care? And did she respond or was it ignored?
Uh, she, there was no um specific questions during her um during the minister's forum, nor was there um any comments during her address to the entire uh group. But I do know there was some delegations, and I haven't heard the results other than they realized that there are issues with healthcare. So. But. Okay, item 11.3. This is a news release from AMO, which is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. And this is Sylvia Jones, the Minister of Health, announced the closure of nine safe consumption sites in the cities across the province and the Ontario government's intention to prohibit the opening of any new safe consumption sites. They will be seeking proposals from municipalities and commute communities for hubs to provide a range of services. So um everyone's quite interested about that to see how that's going to roll out and how it's going to help. Item 11.4 is um, this is a notice of motion, no, it's a resolution from uh the city of Quinty West, calling on the city of Quinty West, calling on the federal government to provide a supplement to the allocations provided to municipalities under the AMO Canada Community Building Fund. Which is for information, item eleven point five is from Bruce Power. It is a notice of commencement of impact assessment for Bruce C. Initial project. So they their proposed expansion is up to forty eight hundred megawatts of nuclear generating capacity on the Bruce Power site. And the process will assess the impact that this project will have on the environment, indigenous nations and communities and local municipalities. And should the province of Ontario and Bruce Power choose to proceed with a new build on Bruce Power's existing site, additional permitting and licensing activities will be required. Deputy Mayor Dick?
Thank you, your worship. Just on on the Bruce Power notice of of doing the impact assessment process, does do we know what what they look at when they say the impact it has on local municipalities? Because it it does have an impact as far as, you know, labor forces taking employees away from local businesses and things like that. Is there an opportunity to to ask whether that's part of it? That's a question more than anything.
Yes, I'm hoping that once, if this does move forward, that there will be like public meetings held. And we will be able to give our input with that. And I do know I was introduced to the new president Eric Chassard, Chassard. And he mentioned that Bruce C. will be more robotics than it will be people. And I'm hoping that is the way. But we'll see.
So it is something that we'll have another opportunity to ask those types of questions. Okay, thank you.
I think this is just the first step there, notice to say they're starting, so. Okay. I keep forgetting to look at councillor Cable. So councillor Cable, again, if you have a comment, please just speak up. Item eleven point six, again, for information, this is from Crime Stoppers of Gray Bruce. Their that media release is saying they're in desperate need of funds and board members in order to continue. And they have enough funding to operate until March thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. They do do good work. I know it helps our police service. Chief Noel has talked about Crime Stoppers quite often and our service, HPS, Hanover Police Service, has committed to supporting Crime Stoppers. So there is a donation that goes out to them yearly. Okay, eleven point seven is the Gray County and Committee of the Whole highlights. Deputy Mayor Dicke?
Thank you, your worship. Highlights from that August eighth meeting. Council accepted the minutes of the July twenty third Long Term Care Committee of Management Meeting. And those minutes included recognition of Gray County Long Term Care receiving exemplary standing under the Qmentum Long Term Care Accreditation Program. So congratulations to that team for achieving this. And as an FYI, Qmentum is a global accreditation program that deals with the standards and resources needed to keep patients and workforce safe. The meeting, the minutes also highlighted some of the challenges our long-term care facility are facing when it comes to HVAC systems, which, you know, we've had our own share of those here and premature failures and the increased cost for those repairs. The equipment is critical to meeting provincially imposed temperature ranges in the facilities and has triggered the need to conduct broader investigations into repair and replacement options. Council accepted the minutes of the July twenty fifth Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force Meeting. And those minutes included updates on the Rockwood Terrace Project in Durham. And at this time, there is no forecasted variances for the completion of the project with regards to timing and construction schedules. In the Committee of the Whole meeting, council heard a delegation on from the executive director of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus about their strategic priorities, which include housing, infrastructure, workforce, mental health, addictions, and homelessness, broadband, infrastructure, and economic development. Western Ontario Warden Caucus actually represents three hundred upper and single single tiered communities, two hundred and fifty thousand businesses within that area, and one point five million residents. So it's takes in a big chunk of Ontario. Council received a report regarding the Gray County Paramedic Services Response Time Performance Plan for twenty twenty five. And based on the response time performance for twenty three and first half of twenty four, the same targets are being recommended for twenty twenty five and will be submitted to the Ministry of Health. As an example of what those targets are for sudden cardiac arrest, the target for paramedics to be on site is six minutes or less forty percent of the time. And for the report period that we looked at, Gray County average was fifty four point six seven percent of the time. So currently exceeding that goal by about fourteen fourteen and some percent. In twenty twenty three, Gray County Paramedic Services responded to fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty five calls for service. That's basically over forty calls a day and that volume continues to increase through to twenty twenty four. So that is my report.
Thank you. All right, any comments or questions? Seeing none, item twelve is planning and other meetings. Of course, all of the meetings are listed on this agenda and on our website. Just a couple of changes, item twelve point three, the Cultural Roundtable Subcommittee, that meeting has been canceled. And I want to add that there will be a meeting of the Hanover-Walkerden Waste Management Committee on September tenth at ten AM and also on September seventeenth at one PM. So. All right, dates to remember and announcements, the next Committee of the Whole meeting is Monday, October seventh at four PM. The next regular council meeting is Monday, September sixteenth at four PM. And our finance committee is Monday, September twenty third at four PM. At this time, I'll ask if there's any notices of motion. Seeing none, we do have a closed meeting. And it is recommended that Hanover council meet in closed session in order to address a matter pertaining to labor relations or employee negotiations and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege regarding shared service delivery and service efficiencies. So I need a mover and seconder to go into close, councillor Sackel and councillor Hawking. All in favor? That is carried.
Are you going to take a recess, your worship?
Solicitor client privilege regarding shared service delivery and service efficiencies. And I will ask for one more motion, and that is to adjourn the open session at seven oh one. Moved by councillor Sackel, seconded by councillor Hudson. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you.